Hello and welcome to the conversation Daily Burn. I'm your host Eric Miller. Today by an awesome progressive from the great state of New York, running for New York City, City Council, District 24, Momita Ahmed. How are you doing, Momita?
Hi Eric, thank you for having me. I'm really excited about this conversation.
Yeah, thanks for taking some time to talk with me. You were one of the co-founders of Millennials for Bernie back in 2015. And I want to ask a little bit about that as we go. And I've been following you on socials for probably since then, basically. And I got to compliment you on your handle. Your handle is disruptionary, which is just badass and cool as all get out, right? So every time I see your name, like that's such a great. I don't think I knew your real name for a while. I just knew you as disruptionary. But it's nice to finally catch up with you. I want to ask, obviously, you're running for city council. We want to get into your platform a little bit. Obviously, a grassroots campaign, so I'm going to plug your website a bunch, momita.com. She could use our support. Special election coming in February. We'll get all that. But you know, what activated you lately? Can you get into, you know, what animated you initially to get into politics?
Yeah, the world and just my lived experience. Growing up, it was very tough. I grew up in a low-income household in a rent-stabilized apartment. So my entire life, I've had to deal with housing insecurity. And when I was going to school around the time the recession hit, so there wasn't really a future for me. And I realized that very quickly because of movements like Occupy Wall Street, where people were out in the streets fighting for, to cancel student loans and protest the grip that Wall Street has on our economy. And all of that pretty much inspired me to get more involved in protests and more radical politics. And but at the same time, I was struggling with work. So I was working for candidates in New York State doing door knocking and canvassing. And I ended up working for an amazing candidate running for governor. Her name is Zephyr Teachout. And that was sort of like my entry into, an entry into like progressive electoral politics. Because prior to that, I didn't really believe in it. Just because I was so disillusioned. I was one of the people that voted for Obama back in 2008 and then not seeing the change, right? Like I was just so disillusioned. But then Bernie decided to run for office. And I started to realize, like, you know, it started, it began with Zephyr, but Bernie is somebody who was talking about issues that I'm impacted by on a national level. And so I decided to get involved with the crew of People for Bernie. And then I realized, okay, like, where's the millennials? Where are they? Because he's speaking to us. And we should actually help him get to a place of fame. Because his ideas, his ideas are so current and something that we all are affected by and care about. And he gave us a reason to vote. So it started with making memes. And it actually started with Bernie's first rally going there and just sitting in a circle with a bunch of college students who came from like University of Vermont or something like that. And just being like, hey, like, we need to help this old dude who needs, who definitely needs a lot of help on social media. So that's how it started. And since then, I've kind of fell in love with the movement organizing and have learned a lot since then. And now I'm running myself for city council.
Right on. Yeah. And thanks for doing so. I want to, I want to mention that Fatisha has a new book out, Break 'Em Up, which is fantastic. So, you know, she, I've been trying to get her on the show. She's incredible. And you're endorsed by her. And I think you're also endorsed by Cynthia Nixon. So am I right about that? Yeah, pretty big endorsement.
Yeah, thanks.
You know what? It's, I'm glad that you shared about that, that the inspiration that Bernie Sanders, you know, was and continues to be. Because, you know, there were, there were, there was, you know, I hate that it's an overused term, but the silent majority of us out there. And when he started to catch fire, just like you said, when you went to that first rally and stuff, like, there was, I'm not alone in these thoughts. I'm not alone in wanting to pursue these policies. I remember, you know, seeing those first big rallies, like in Seattle, where he's filling arenas. And I was like, holy shit, this is a, this is a real movement. This is a real thing. And, you know, it inspired the AOCs and the Momitas and, you know, the next waves behind him. So, you know, I'm glad that you shared that and that you're living that and, you know, pursuing elected office as a result of that. So it's District 24, which is Queens, in Queens, a lot of boroughs, cities. Can you talk about, just, I always like to give people an opportunity to brag on their district. I think you're born and raised in 24. Can you brag on District 24? Tell us about it.
Yeah, I was actually born in Bangladesh. And I came here when I was eight years old. And I'm a first generation immigrant. And my district is in Queens. It covers neighborhoods like Hugh Gardens, Jamaica Hills, Briarwood, Pomono, Elchester. It's just like an eastern part of Queens. It has a very old school Jewish community here. We have a burgeoning Muslim and South Asian community here. It's a very, it's one of the most diverse neighborhoods in Queens. We have big Latino population here. It's just like a melting pot, which is all of Queens, really. And but it's one of those places where there's lack of transportation. It's very working class. It's exactly the kind of community that Bernie Sanders is talking about. And, you know, our policies, like, people would benefit from. And it's, you know, there's really great food. There's always really great food in Queens. And we, it's also a very park-friendly district. There's a lot of trees. And there's a lot of, you know, historical places, parks. I actually grew up seven minutes, like a seven-minute walk from Donald Trump's childhood home. So there's also the Jamaica Estates area that's right there. Governor Cuomo also grew up here in Jamaica, where I'm running. And yeah, it's kind of like, you have the, one of the richest zip codes in my district. But you also have, you know, a lot of disparity. You have areas that aren't as rich or wealthy in my district.
Interesting. Yeah, I want to ask, obviously, you have a very people-centered policy and platform. And I want to get into some of the things. But, you know, I also want to give you kudos and opportunity to talk about the Queens Mutual Aid Network, co-founder of that. Tell us, tell us what the mission statement of that is and what you've been able to accomplish with that.
Yeah. So during the pandemic, I put on my organizing hat. And I believe around that time, we were still organizing for Bernie. And he hadn't dropped out yet. And we're like, look, we have to do what's right by our movement. And that is to help the most vulnerable people, right? And this, although it's a pandemic and things are horrible right now, like, this is when people need to know about our policies. And this is the perfect moment to access those individuals, right, who are in need of help right now. Because our government is literally failing us, is not equipped to handle this kind of crisis. And so I founded a group called the Queens Mutual Aid Network. And it is, it's not, it's not a new idea. It's quite old. It's based on Kropotkin's theory of mutual aid. And the idea is to organize our neighbors to help one another, right? Pretty much what Bernie says. Are you willing to fight for someone you don't know? And that's exactly what we did. We created an organization where we brought together young people who, at that time, were told, like, kind of, you know, safer for us to go out and deliver stuff. And so we brought together 300 volunteers across Queens to provide medicine, groceries, whatever people, basic things that people needed, that they weren't getting during the pandemic, while they were quarantining. And we've helped over 2,000 families across Queens. And right now, we're helping 12 families with rent relief, who are, you know, families who are undocumented and didn't receive any pandemic assistance. And we've done a ton of great advocacy too, around food justice, food insecurity, and things like that. And that's what I did in June, throughout, you know, during the pandemic, ended up getting sick myself, but recovered. And yeah.
Yeah. And thanks for doing that work. It's noble work. And, you know, I'm glad, you know, I'm glad that you're, you know, you're putting your money where your mouth is. And I like to highlight that because, you know, there, you know, this, like, the authenticity, you know, I don't want to necessarily talk about burning this whole interview. But, you know, the authenticity of someone like him, someone like you, shows in public service, right? You're a public servant, first, running for elected office, second, right? So he was an advocate before he was a politician, right? Rather than the other way around. So, you know, people in your district would be, would be blessed to have you representing them, obviously, because of that. So I want to, again, I want to pull up the website as we go. So votemomita.com. You have a couple of events coming up. So let me give you an opportunity to talk about that, the Save Our Small Business platform. It seems like you have events. I know you have some tiers in that. Talk about your, you know, your hopes and aspirations to, you know, to, you know, help these small businesses during this, you know, obviously challenging time.
Yeah. So right now, our local businesses, they're shutting down because they can't afford rent. And you know what happens when they close down? You've got big corporate, commercial businesses move in, like, you know, your Walmarts and your 7-Elevens, like, they move in. And then they raise the property tax of that district. And then the people living there get, they can't live there any longer. So we're trying to prevent this, like disaster capitalism that we all are familiar with. And so one of the ways that we're trying to help our small businesses is by bringing them together to do, like, you know, to do listening tours and listen in and figure out ways to support them. You know, if I could use my campaign to amplify them so that more people are buying things for them, from them, or whatever it is, or if I could advocate for them to, to elected officials and, you know, legislation that will benefit them, then that's kind of what we're trying to do, is bring them together and show that, hey, there's a need for passing these legislation to cap the rent, or like, cancel their rent. Because that's what they need right now. They don't have any business right now. No, everybody's stuck at home. So they shouldn't have to pay rent. There should, we should cancel their rent. So that's kind of what we're doing with the Small Business Event, where we're bringing them together to talk about ways we can pressure our elected officials to support this, these bills.
Yeah. And again, highlight, you're doing that before, God willing, you're in office, right? So again, it's a testimony to your activism and where your heart is. So votemomita.com, obviously, there's a donate button up here. You're going to want to go donate, right? Sign up on her mailing list. And, you know, the beauty of politics in 2020 and 2021 is, you know, you can, you have phone banking, people can help you from anywhere in the country, right? So, you know, if you're, if you're, if you support Bernie craft, if you will, right, Momita needs our help. And your election is in February, February 2nd, is that right?
Yeah, it's February 2nd. And it's the first ever ranked choice voting campaign in New York City. So it is an experiment in some ways. I am the guinea pig for the progressives. So, you know, I could really use everybody's help, especially because I have a chance, I have a shot at winning this. I ran for district leader in June. I got over 2,000 votes. And this was during the pandemic when I had COVID. I was kicked off the ballot by the board election. The entire county machine was against me and spending like thousands of dollars, sending out mailers. Meanwhile, I was sick at home, spent less than, I didn't even open up a committee, spent less than $1,000. And I got votes, over 2,000 votes from the community. Why? Because they saw the effort that I put in. And they saw that I was advocating for their, their rights. You know, I was pushing for the stimulus bill that Bernie and the Senate was talking about. And the Democrats in Congress, like AOC, they were pushing for. And so I did a lot of education. I helped people fill out their unemployment forms. And so imagine what I could do now with city, in the city council race, where I have the ability to compete because of this program called matching funds, which means every dollar that I, that someone donates to my campaign gets matched by the city times eight. So if somebody gives like $20, that's $180. And the city will match up to $175. So this is, this is a way to actually allow someone like me, who's working class, I don't have a lot of money, to compete against people who are going to get thousands of dollars from the real estate industry or the fossil fuel industry.
Right. Yeah, that's, from what I know, my limited knowledge of New York politics, real estate lobby is a big opponent to progressives, right? So, you know, votemomita.com. Let's talk about, let's talk about renters' rights and eviction crisis. Obviously, that is, you know, people, you know, people aren't getting their unemployment. Like, there's, you know, the moratorium on rent is expiring. Talk about what that looks like in your district and, you know, what you hope to do about that.
Yeah. So I am the only renter running, which is crazy to me. Because this is a moment where we really do need voices like mine in City Hall and everywhere. And so what I, we're in the midst of the biggest housing crisis that this country has ever seen. And New York, especially being a big real estate city, is going to, it's going to get, we're going to get hit the hardest. And there's already 19 million people who are unemployed and at risk of eviction, right? And throughout the country. And so what we're proposing is to work with legislators in Albany to cancel rent and mortgage payments for small homeowners. Because they're also working class, believe, for the most part, most of these, especially black and brown homeowners. And then suspend any rent payments on commercial properties to help businesses. And enact a comprehensive moratorium, which has currently has been lifted, which is why you're seeing people getting evicted. And then also give people the means to quarantine themselves until the pandemic is over. So, and we could do that by like taxing the rich, for example. And I have other ideas. But, you know, people talk about, oh, but we can't fund this, or whatever, the federal government has to do it. But, you know, the other day, I was like looking at how New York City actually made $840 million in revenue despite the pandemic. And we have the comptroller emailed people about how he, they, their office saved $610 million. That is $1.4 billion right there. Okay. And then there's so many other places where we can get money from. We are the richest city in a state that eclipses, that whose economy eclipses those of nations in the richest country in the world. So for me, I feel like there's so much we could do. And canceling rent is definitely doable. And one of the policies that I support.
Right on. You know, that gets me thinking about another component of this is, is immigration reform, right? There are a lot of undocumented workers, you know, that probably at risk of being exploited by nefarious renters, right, during this time. So talk about, you know, they kind of hide in the shadows. They're afraid to report, you know, crimes committed against them and, you know, violating their rent fantasy rights and so forth. Talk about your, you know, as you mentioned, you come from, you know, an immigrant family. Can you talk about your platform and what you would like to change in terms of, you know, immigration policy and, you know, bringing some of these folks a little more, making a little more comfortable to come out of the shadows, if you will?
Yeah. So when I was doing my mutual aid work, I cannot tell you how many people are in homeless shelters because they were immigrants, right? They were undocumented. And because they can't, they can't just like get a lease or do certain things that were able to do as citizens, right? Many of them, some of them are like in my community are living in like, they're subletting apartments. And I'm not talking like a whole apartments. They're like, people are subletting living rooms, like people are subletting their living rooms to other families so that they can pay rent, that they can afford their rent. And this is, this means like eight people are sharing a two-bedroom apartment, which is crazy. It's like living in the 1800s, tenement-style housing. And that shouldn't be the case in 2020. So during the pandemic, these people were evicted. And they had nowhere to go. And they, they didn't have anyone to help them or fight for them. And then you have your renters, right? Like who, if they were kicked out, they didn't have anyone, they didn't know how to fight for their rights. And so one of the things I'm proposing is right to counsel. If you're going to go to housing court, especially for immigrants, language barrier is an issue. Like, we do have a language barrier. And so we need to, the government should provide them with legal counsel that's also language accessible, right? And the other thing is, I want to legalize basements, basement apartments, because there's so many landlords that exploit tenants because they know that, I mean, they're are taking a risk also, right? So, but that creates a situation where, you know, someone's willing to live in a very dangerous, unsafe situation and pay exorbitant amount for it. And I think that sort of exploitation should go, should not exist. And so I'll, you know, there's, there's not much we could do in the council in terms of passing legislation to change, to change things. But what we could do is make, make things a little bit easier for tenants. And I think legalizing basement is one way to prevent exploitation. And so this, so housing being such a big issue pretty much touches every corner of all of the issues that we're talking about, whether it's climate change, whether it's immigration, really is just a big issue right now in the city.
Yeah, here, here. Well said. And, you know, that connects to, let's tie that in a little bit about law enforcement, right? So talk about, and obviously, you know, you kind of had to do, there's some things you can and can't do in city council. But you can certainly be a voice, even if something you can't legislate, you certainly can provide resources, be an advocate and so forth, right? So, you know, talk about, I think you have a family history of running with ICE. They might not be ICE specifically, but, you know, you mentioned, actually, when we go out, I'm going to play an ad, your, your new campaign ad, which you can also find on votemomita.com. And you mentioned your dad getting hassled, you know, I don't know if it was by ICE per se.
It's during Stop and Frisk.
Okay, yeah, yeah, terrible, right? So, you know, so the modern version of that, you might say, equate somewhat to ICE. So talk about your position on, you know, ICE and maybe springboard into, you know, police accountability and law enforcement, criminal justice reform.
Yeah, so I'm for abolishing ICE. I don't think I should have any place anywhere near our city. I mean, New York City is a sanctuary city. And I don't, I would, I wouldn't want police officers to work with ICE to deport our community members. Because you know what? They pay taxes too. And, and like, so my father during the Stop and Frisk era, sorry, my nose is really itchy today for some reason. But during the Stop and Frisk era, yeah, it was, my dad was arrested for being on the subway. And part of it was because he just didn't know, speak enough English to explain himself, whatever questions they were asking. And police officers tend to be very aggressive, especially if you're an immigrant and you're black or brown, or, you know, you, you don't know how to really defend yourself, right? And so he was unfairly detained. And our family, we had no idea where he was. And I had to help my mom search for him. And because we had to wait 24 hours to really like, you know, call the police and search, etc., I had to do things like go to the hospital and identify bodies. Or, and it was such a traumatizing, or, you know, I went with my uncle because they didn't let young people actually see in case it was my dad. And, but either way, it was just such a horrifying experience. And like, it made me lose faith in our criminal justice system. And or just, you know, at that time, like, it stayed with me. And then over time, when I realized, when I, when I saw what happened to Mike Brown, when I saw what happened to Eric Garner, like, all of it kind of clicked. Where I was like, wow, this is systemic. This is a systemic issue. And this is a moral issue. And we do have to, we have to do something about it. And that's where city council can have a huge impact. Because the city decides on the budget of the police departments in every city. And so city council, because we get to vote on the budget, you know, we have an opportunity to shift the money that we spend on overpolicing, militarization of our police forces, and just like straight up racketeering, right? And harassing people for, and shift that, shift, shift that budget for, to, towards like our education system, towards fixing our schools, towards our hospitals, towards our roads. They're so, towards more youth, creating youth programs to help black and brown youth, towards creating a mental health programs, right? And then hiring social workers to respond to mental health calls, calls involving someone with mental health issues instead of police officers. Or, and so this is, this is kind of, this is what I'm proposing is that, and so many people agree with me, especially at this moment. You know, I was one of the people arrested during, when George, the George Floyd protests broke out. And there was an unfair curfew. And so my, my colleagues and I went out. And we were trying to sort of help young people, especially who were protesting for the first time, making sure they were safe. And, you know, the police were just like, just attacking folks out of nowhere, just like, and so for me, I think, like, that's, that's one of the reasons why I became so active politically was because of the injustices of our police system. So that's something very dear to my heart. And I'm going to make sure that, you know, I'm part of the city council, the new slate of folks that are going to support shifting the budget and reducing it.
That's great. And I'm glad you explained that. There's, you know, there's, you know, the news of the day is Barack Obama's, you know, slagging the defund the police slogan, rather than doing exactly what you did, which is explaining what it means, right? Reinvesting in social workers. So, you know, police don't have to go respond to a wellness call. And it ends up, you know, getting shot and so forth, right? So, yeah, I'm glad you took the time to explain that. And, you know, you know, Godspeed, you know, hopefully you win the position and are able to affect some change or be that voice in the city council. Again, I'll say it's votemomita.com. She needs our help. You know, you can volunteer, sign up on her mailing list, share this video, you know, like her socials, make a donation, $5, $10. She said it's matched. You know, you can, you know, this is, it's a very winnable seat. And Momita is, you know, is one of us, if you will, right? So, you know, let's, let's help her get across the finish line. Election Day is February 2nd, is that right?
That's right. It's a special. Yep. And it's nonpartisan.
Great, great, great. You know, is there anything else that you want to talk about policy-wise? You know, I'm interested, I always love when someone goes from like an advocate to legislator, right? And hopefully you'll be making that jump, you know, anything else policy-wise that you want to highlight on? Again, I'm going to close out on your campaign video. But anything that we didn't talk about, you want to mention of that you think is a priority in your district or your platform?
Yeah, absolutely. So climate change, as a Bangladeshi-American, I come from a country that is ravaged by climate change. And because of climate change, we're going to have millions And because of climate change, we're going to have millions of people from Bangladesh displaced and become climate refugees. And so I know what it's like to, when, to, to like to watch, you know, your entire city become flooded and to lose power like every 10 minutes and like, you know, to see devastation. And we've seen it here in New York, in New York City. And so I'm running to build a resilient, sustainable New York City. And that's part of the reason why I'm pledging not to take any fossil fuel industry money. It's something I care about deeply because, again, it also ties into the housing crisis. Like our community is displaced in, you know, displaced in Bangladesh and we're displaced here. And so I think that it's, it's really, this is an opportunity, this is a moment to center climate change and talk about how even this pandemic is a result, right? Of us not addressing this issue as urgently as we should be and passing the Green New Deal. Because of deforestation, you have, con- human contact with animals will increase and, and there, that, that's likely to increase our chances of contracting new diseases and like have, you know, these pandemics, right? Like this could become a norm, which I don't want. And so I'm definitely gonna be centering climate issues. Transportation is a big part of that. I live in a transportation desert, if you, you may say so. So, yeah. So just wanted to throw that out there as that's a big one for me.
Yeah, great. And obviously on the progressive issues, you check all the boxes. Your, your, you know, support unionization, you support, you know, raising the minimum wage to a living wage, Medicare for All, you, you mentioned. You know, imagine Medicare for All in your district during a pandemic.
Oh, yeah.
You know, what a, yeah, if anyone's not advocating for Medicare for All during a pandemic, you know, what's, I don't know where it's at. Like what's, it's inexplicable. I can't, it's a head scratcher, you know?
I know. I, I think people should feel, like when I hear someone not supporting it, I like cringe. Like I cringe normally, but I've watched other people who, who normally don't cringe be like, really, during a pandemic? So I think this is definitely, certainly a time to push. I mean, even during, in New York City, what I'm grateful for is that during the pandemic, we did do one good thing, which is expand New York City care to all people, including undocumented folks. So we're gonna be fighting in the council to keep that a norm. And yeah, it's, 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 healthcare is a big one. And I'm also actually, this is something a little bit different than others, other folks that I've seen, is I'm advocating for language justice. Because when I was young, I spent a lot of time translating for my parents. I, I had to do everything for them as, I had to grow up early because of that. And I think language justice is so important, not just for immigrants, like for everybody. Even someone like me, I, I, you know, sometimes it's hard for me to decipher what, you know, what my bills say or, and, and like what if, you know, like whether or not this, like I'm getting myself into a scam or a Ponzi scheme, right? Like, so I, that we really need to invest in financial literacy and language access and things like that and make language accessible and easier for people to understand, especially government documents, bills, litigation papers, all of those things.
Yeah. And back to the earlier points, like if you don't have that, you're, you're susceptible to exploitation, right? Talking about tendency rights and, you know, your father's situation and so forth, right? I mean, that, that is ubiquitous. I'm glad you're fighting for that as well. Well, Mometa, it's votemamita.com. You know, anyone watching this, share the video, make a donation, do some phone banking, text banking, sign up on her mailing list, share her, like her socials and so forth. You know, there are many races coming in February. Everyone's focusing on Georgia, but there are other Bernie Krantz. You know, we can help Mometa, you know, affect change in New York City. And, you know, like I said at the beginning, I admire all of your work. I've sort of, you know, been following you for the past five years on socials and so forth. And, you know, win, lose or draw, Mometa's just getting started. Let's get behind her and, you know, you know, help her effectively some change in elected office. So.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That means a lot to me. You know, the Bernie movement is my home. It's a family. And so I would really appreciate any help that folks can give me. Thank you so much, Eric, for having me.
Thank you. I will, I can't wait to talk to you again and call you councilperson Ahmed, I think would be the term, right? So hopefully we'll have that conversation. I'm gonna close that with a campaign ad. So stick around, it's like 90 seconds, so watch that. Yeah. Thank you, Mometa. Votemamita.com. Go make a donation, February 2nd. Go out and vote. Thank you. Godspeed.
Feel the burn.
Love it. Thank you. I love your shirt. We didn't, we didn't show it on air, but you got the Bernie shirt with the New York City skyline. It's awesome. So great, great. Thanks.
Bye.
During this pandemic, I watched people get carried out in structures right across from my apartment on Hillside Avenue. My mother lost her job. My dad worked overtime as an essential worker at a factory packaging medicines and put himself at risk of COVID every day. People were dying and our whole neighborhood of Jamaica Hills became a red zone. Queens was being torn apart. My neighbors and I started the Queens Mutual Aid Network, providing food and medicine to thousands of families across our borough. But as hard as we worked, we couldn't save people's jobs, we couldn't solve hunger and we couldn't stop people from being evicted from their homes. That's the city's job and that's exactly why I'm running for city council. We've done everything our officials have asked, work from home, worn mask, social distance, but the city council hasn't done its job. I am an immigrant from Bangladesh who went to PS 131 in Jamaica. I will fight for our children so they can go to school safely and get a world-class education. When I was 12, my father was arrested for the crime of having a Muslim name. He was detained without even a phone call. I will institute an elected civilian review board to hold the police accountable. Like most of us, I am a renter. I will fight against evictions and the non-stop harassment many of us face from greedy landlords. I come from a working-class family. I know what it feels like to be exploited for a minimum wage job. I will fight to protect workers' rights. After all, we are Queens and when we are united, nothing can stop us from achieving justice and dignity. Nothing can stop us from living our dreams. Now it's time for us. My name is Momita Ahmed and I'm running for city council in District 24 for us.
Es nuestro tiempo para nosotros.
Eta amadeh sumay, eta amader jono.
Es nuestro tiempo.
Eta amadeh sumay, amader jono.